If I could have your attention, please, I'd like to welcome you to our City Council meeting this December the fourteenth, 2023. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers, and we thank you for participating in your city government, and we kindly ask that you please silence all electronic devices. In just a moment, I'm going to ask us all stand, and I'm going to ask Pastor Jay McCagg from Crossroads Baptist Church to lead us to our invocation. If you will, please remain standing, and this beautiful young lady here beside me, Michaela Devine, Little Miss St. Cloud, will lead our pledge of allegiance immediately following the invocation. It's good to have both of you here today.
Pastor. Please join me in a word of prayer. Father God, we count it a privilege to be here tonight and to observe the civil government that you've given us. We thank you, Father, for this community. We thank you for the people in this community, Father. We thank you for the home that we've been able to build here. Father, we just pray now that everything that's done here tonight is done rightly and in order to bring honor and glory to you. We thank you, Father, for this time of year when we celebrate the birth of your son. And, Father, we just humbly pray, Father, that your blessings will be across to everything that we do tonight, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Once again, I'd like to welcome Ms. Michaela Devine as she turns and leads us in our pledge of allegiance to the flag. Are you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You did a good job. And we're very grateful. Please, none of the things. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Matheny.
She's here, but she'll be coming a little bit late.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
And Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
First of all, are there any agenda updates?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be pulling on consent agenda, item A, off of the agenda.
Are there any other changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a retirement presentation that will be done by Ivy Larno. Laro. All right.
I'd like to call Ms. Anna Hare up, clear? Okay. Ms. Anna Hare has been with the city since 1985. That's 38 years and five months, probably longer than some people have been alive in this room. Anna started her career with the records department with the St. Cloud Police Department, and then transitioned to records at City Hall. She is currently the city records manager and has been extremely instrumental in updating the cities and the way the city maintains records. She is known as the goddess of records and leaves behind a legacy. She will be missed, and we wish her well. Would you like to say something?
No, I don't think that I would. Well, the only thing I say is, I have watched the city grow. When I got here in 1985, I'm sorry, I've been fine this whole time. There was barely 100 people, employees, and we now have 630.
What's your employee?
My employee number is 28.
Oh, my gosh.
And I am just thankful for the opportunities I was given here and by you and by a lot of the friends and people that I have met here and that I will always keep in my heart. And I hope I get invited to parties and things like that. I'll bake, okay? But thank you. Thank you for everything.
And we have a small token of our appreciation, which is not a whole lot, and many years and the great investments you've made for our city, and we love you and we appreciate you. You've made a big difference in our city.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite the councilmen, would come down and join us and look at what you made of this lady, because this is a rather historic day. Anyone else on the dance, especially the manager?
Dan, come on. I was here when they brought you in. We've been working.
Sure aren't supposed to make it that come.
How would you like for us to do that?
I like being behind Ivy, too. Now, coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Have fun on your cruise.
I still want my birthday cake, Anna.
At this time, we have a presentation by the community development, the annual historic preservation report.
Good morning, Council-- I'm sorry, good evening, councilmembers. Tisha Manning is only manager for community development, and I will be presenting the report for the Historic Preservation Board, the annual report. Historic Preservation Board, of course, does certificate of appropriateness and, you know, just looks at the vitality of our historic preservation area in downtown. So I'm going to go through the accomplishments of staff and the board, as well as some updates to the processes that we've had. The annual report for the Historic Preservation Board for the tax exempt, that is still currently underway, it has not been fully implemented, but it is one of our goals and objectives for 2024. So it is one of the things that we anticipate having that tax exemption implemented before the end of fiscal year 2024. The Plaques and Awards Program was very successful. Approximately 100 citizens participated in that, as well as some of the council members who were in attendance. We had a proclamation that was read by the mayor, and, you know, several sponsors for the event were there, as well as we have some collaboration information that is part of your packet that you have in front of you, and it's in appendix. During the year, we had a lot of work sessions that was hosted by our consultant, so where she would meet with the board, and she would go over Robert's rules, she would go over things as far as updating the bylaws that talked about, you know, just different rules of order. They also, one of the biggest things that they accomplished in the work sessions was updating the major and minor review chart for the certificate of appropriateness. Some of the items that were originally major reviews are now minor reviews, which means that it's at staff level to approve, and it's more cost efficient to the citizens and those that are applying. We also updated the certificate appropriate checklist. That is also included in appendix C, just for you to review, and the website is fully updated and operational. So this year, we had 22 certificate of appropriateness applications that were all either approved or went before the board, and a few of them, we did have to take them back several times, but the majority of those certificate appropriateness were approved. We only had maybe one or two denials, and we worked with the citizens to get them to a status where they needed to be. You have copies of the signed work session minutes in appendix C, as well as copies of the signed meeting minutes in appendix D. On June 12, 23, the Secretary of Interior Standards were established for the St. Cloud National Historic District. The district is approximately 83.8 acres, and it has 177 contributing buildings, 53 non-contributing buildings, and 230 resources in total. We did provide you a copy of the map of the St. Cloud Downtown National Register in appendix The City of St. Cloud was also approved and received a small matching grant of $50,000, and this is to hire a consultant to help us with the preservation plan and update the existing ordinance, as well as create design standards and guidelines. So that is still currently underway. We are still working on that. The grant right now is actually with procurement, and we anticipate getting RFP out on that so that we can actually start working on some of those design standards and guidelines. St. Cloud Main Street was awarded the $50,000 to hire, was awarded the $50,000 to hire a preservation consultant to survey approximately 250 properties within the grid, which is the downtown district. They held their kickoff meeting. None of city staff was in attendance to that meeting, but we did receive the information and have been in communication with them. The project is scheduled to be completed by June of 2024. And that's all that we have for our presentation at this time, and do you have any questions for me?
Well, first of all, we thank you for all the work that you and your team have done. Historic preservation is certainly something that should never be minimized. It's very important to know your history and where you came from. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone in the council have any comments? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I want to echo his sentiments. I love the Historic Preservation Board. I know it's a living and breathing process, and we learn constantly and, you know, make adjustments. I'm glad that staff is able to take a more active role in it now, because I know there's been, you know, it's just a learning curve, right? But I'm, thank you for all your hard work, and I think it's going to be amazing for the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Urban?
Yeah, just saying, I wanted to echo those comments as well. We have a very, very unique history in our city, and I think it should be celebrated, and I just wanted to also, on top of staff, I just wanted to thank all of the residents who take their personal time to volunteer on this board, because it is very important to our city. So, thank you all.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If any one in the audience wishes to address--
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped to citizens forum.
You did. Thank you.
I'm going by the, let's jump back to the citizens forum. Sorry about that. I was looking at my screen here. The citizens forum, any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. Betty Danke.
You don't need our name and address.
Yeah, we do. For the record, please.
We're just a couple elves that dropped in. Betty Danke, 4776 Hidden Heights Trail, St. Cloud.
Do you start this? You go ahead.
Who are you? Robert and I just want to come and thank you, your staff, for all the help and support you gave us for the parade. My first question is, where are those sexy pajamas you had on on the float? I mean, those were pretty cool. But this was our 60th annual Christmas parade. Can you imagine? That's almost as old as I am. And it was phenomenal. We had over 106 entries. We had over 2,000 people actually in the parade, and these gentlemen in the fire department have said they estimate over 12,000 people watching. That is quite an assembly of people. And if you noticed, as your float went down, if you watched the spectators, the joy, the happiness, everybody was getting along. You could be standing next to your mortal enemy, but that day, everybody was happy. The electricity in the air was so thick you could cut it. But we want to say some special thank yous to some of your staff that worked diligently with us throughout the year, and it's an all-year-long process, behind the scenes, the people that don't really get recognized. And this year, there are just too many to name everybody, but a few is Richard Tox with the fire department, Shonta Price from Your Parks and Rec. What a wonderful person with such a great attitude to work with. Jay Be Miller back there, does an awesome job with video and coordinating the script, my emcee's script, so that everything comes together on YouTube, and if you haven't seen it, sit down and watch it. It's really interesting. And all of his assistants, and Mark Garcia, who placed the barricades for us, which are, believe me, a necessity. People don't always pay attention. But tonight, these two guys, come here. We want to say an extra, extra special. You will never know how hard Wayne Garfro, their crew worked that day. You will never understand some of the challenges that are brought up, from moving cars that are parked in the parade route to making sure the people in the parade are scheduled to be in the parade. And the list goes on and on, and sometimes we sit back and we chuckle at some of the events that happened, but they take care of it, and you cannot do enough for these guys, because they, they work with us all year long, and then the day of the parade, when you have 14, 15,000 people in one place, really within a two-mile area, you just hope and pray there are no incidents. And in today's day and time, we, this was a top priority, the safety, and these gentlemen took care of everything. And I want you to give a special applause to them, because they deserve it, not just for the parade, but all, all year long.
Thank you, God. I know we're getting a little bit long-winded, but special thanks to all of your staff and all of the employees. I mean, it's just been so great for many years. I had to do the barricades, and it's been, Mark Garcia has been a godsend this year. But I hope everyone had a great time. If you noticed, a lot of our floats had the bubble machines of the, you know, the snow machines, you know, that was kind of like the new thing, you know. Well, some of those machines are kind of expensive, so we had, some of our entries had four-man bubble machines, and this is what they did. They would get detergent and water, and if they made it to the bricks, they knew that would be shaken enough that it was going to cause enough bubbles, and they can blow them out there, so. But all jokes aside, though, it really, really was a great event, and thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilmen, for attending.
And we certainly appreciate all the work that you guys did, the city staff, the chamber, you guys. It was an incredible event, well-received, so many accolades from the community, and we thank you once again. It was a great event.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Urban would like to speak.
Sorry, just wanted to reiterate my thanks to everyone, all the volunteers. It was absolutely incredible to see all the people downtown, and I say this every year, St. Cloud has one of the best, most special Christmas parades in all of central Florida, and if you haven't been to see it, check it out or watch it on YouTube. I think it's on our city's YouTube page now, so thank you all so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council during the citizens forum? If not, now we will move on to the consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they will have the same opportunity. First of all, will any, I'd like to remind everyone that item A has been pulled. Mr. Fletcher, would you have an item on the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull item B and H. I want to speak on them at the same time, if you don't mind.
All right. Seeing there's no other lights, Mr. Fletcher?
Just a very short comment here. This is for Hopkins Park. This is the, the approval of the contracts with the architectural company, as well as the engineering company, to start building out of phase one of the Hopkins Park Community Center, and I just wanted to take a minute to, to thank staff for bringing this forward. It's important to our community and the kids out there, so I just wanted to, to take a moment to recognize that. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
And I would like to agree with that. That's certainly been one of my priorities to see happen. I'm so delighted to see this project moving forward. I believe Augusta Odom would like to speak to these items.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmen, and everyone else, that takes care of the city. I want to thank you, first of all. My name is Pastor Augusta Odom, and I live at 1621 Orange Avenue, St. Cloud, and I am the president of the Hopkins Park Community Association. On behalf of Hopkins Park Community, we just want to thank the council for everything that you've done, and, you know, the, the thing that you're kind of, you know, jumping on and trying to get it done for us, and we appreciate it. I can't speak for the whole community, but I can speak for myself, these two ladies here and someone else that really supports our community watch meeting, you know, concerned about, you know, our community and what's going on. It's growing, you know, and, and there's not a lot of crime out there like it used to be. I thank God to the Sheriff's Department and most of the city of St. Cloud, when they came in, you know, because they had more patrol vans out there and were able to clean up that area out there. And also, I'd like to thank the officers that patrol through there, they get out and they talk with the kids, you know, especially if they're out playing in the road, that sometime you see them out there on the basketball court talking to them, and we really appreciate that coming from St. Cloud Police Department. Amen. And we want to thank each and every of you, you know, and y'all just continue to pray for us out at Hopkins Park, you know, because we are actually excited about this community park that y'all gonna, you know, hopefully complete it sometime in the future.
Well, let's move it forward, and you can thank the entire city council for that.
I do.
They're buying it.
I do.
Thank you very much.
All right. God bless y'all. God bless you.
Would anyone else like to speak to any item on the consent agenda? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
The next item on our agenda are public hearings. Madam Clerk, would you please read item number one?
Public hearing for resolution number 2023-240R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida reconsidering the conditional use granted for a parochial school identified as St. Cloud Christian Preparatory School located at 2500 Canoe Creek Road, St. Cloud, Florida, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening again, council. Tisha Manning is only manager for community development. Before you is the conditional use we're reconsidering for St. Cloud Christian Preparatory School. This conditional use was granted in 2022, and one of the conditions was for it to be brought back before the board for reconsideration in December. So that is the reason why it's back before you. Again, staff is recommending approval. So one of the, some of the conditions was, it was to have a loop road that wrapped around the parking lot through phases one and two. They have done that. They have the 84 cars for stacking. They've met their setbacks, and so we're bringing it back before you. We did check with code enforcement, as well as the police department and fire, and no complaints have been received at this location at this time. So right now, we have before you resolution 2023-240R as the conditional use that we're going to carry forward. We did go ahead and carry forward the same conditions from the original conditional use, just removing the section for it to be brought back for reconsideration in a year. Again, staff recommends approval, and likewise, we ask that the council also recommend approval for this item. And if I have, if you have any questions, I'm available, as well as the applicant is available.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak to this item? If not, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Councilmember, question by council, then. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. This question's more for Dan. So when this came to city council, I was opposed to this location for the, for the church, just because of, you know, it's a main road, and we already have all this traffic issues and things. So we asked for it to come back to get a report of, you know, if there's problems or anything, but explain to me, with a conditional use, we can pull them back at any time, right?
Yeah, if they violate terms of the conditions, yes.
Right. I mean, so putting, putting the condition that they have to come back in a year is kind of duplicative?
Well, what we did, as I recall what happened last year, because of the discussion that was on, the city council at the time said, we absolutely want to see it. Typically, bringing it back at any time is something that's left up to staff based on, you know, what goes on out there and complaints. So staff always has an option, has an opportunity to bring a matter back, any conditional use back if they feel that conditions have been violated or if there's a problem with the location. So the one thing that we're asking to remove is the automatic reconsideration of it every year.
So is the school completely built out, and it's fully full with students and everything?
Is there, yeah. So why don't you, will you come up, please?
Need to come to stand microphone, please, sir. State your name and address, please.
Pete Baldwin, 2930 Marjorie Road, St. Cloud. Yes, it's completely built out and fully staffed.
And you're at capacity, like there's not going to be any more students coming?
We're very happy with enrollment. We might take one or two, but we're very happy. It's right where we planned it to be.
Okay. Thank you.
I live in the area. I've been up and down that road several times. My school was starting when school was letting out, and one of our concerns was that it might create some traffic hazards, and there never has been any problems that I've seen, and I'm up and down that road practically every day, and many times while they were getting in and out.
Councilmember Fletcher?
I just want to echo the same comments as, as the mayor. You guys have done a really good job with the stacking and complying with the, the conditions that staff had placed on this, and the conditions that we did, the ride and, ride out, I believe, is working. In that area is a busy road. I would be in favor of, I mean, that's what's in the, the agenda packet, is removing the automatic renewal, and then if we do start to see some issues there, then we can address it at that time, but, you know, good job on maintaining that. I wish some of the other schools could, could do as good as, as what you guys are doing out there. So, thank you.
Is, are there any other comments? Dan, do you have any concerns about what you just said?
No.
You want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher, second. Councilmember Urban, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
The next item on our agenda are public hearings. Madam Clerk, would you please read item number one?
Public hearing for resolution number 2023-240R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida reconsidering the conditional use granted for a parochial school identified as St. Cloud Christian Preparatory School located at 2500 Canoe Creek Road, St. Cloud, Florida, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening again, council. Tisha Manning is only manager for community development. Before you is the conditional use we're reconsidering for St. Cloud Christian Preparatory School. This conditional use was granted in 2022, and one of the conditions was for it to be brought back before the board for reconsideration in December. So that is the reason why it's back before you. Again, staff is recommending approval. So one of the, some of the conditions was, it was to have a loop road that wrapped around the parking lot through phases one and two. They have done that. They have the 84 cars for stacking. They've met their setbacks, and so we're bringing it back before you. We did check with code enforcement, as well as the police department and fire, and no complaints have been received at this location at this time. So right now, we have before you resolution 2023-240R as the conditional use that we're going to carry forward. We did go ahead and carry forward the same conditions from the original conditional use, just removing the section for it to be brought back for reconsideration in a year. Again, staff recommends approval, and likewise, we ask that the council also recommend approval for this item. And if I have, if you have any questions, I'm available, as well as the applicant is available.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak to this item? If not, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Councilmember, question by council, then.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Brings us to items two and three, please.
First reading and introduction of ordinance number 2023-56, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of approximately 30.38 acres identified as Nova Road rezoning from LDR Low Density Residential Future Land Use Designation to MDR Medium Density Residential Future Land Use Designation, generally located north of Nova Road, east of Bay Breeze Drive, and south of Shaker Palm Place, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission, recommendation, and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability, copies on file, and effective date. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-57, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 30.38 acres identified as Nova Road rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential zoning designation to R3 Multi-Families Dwelling zoning designation, generally located north of Nova Road, east of Bay Breeze Drive, and south of Shaker Palm Place, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the planning commission, recommendation, and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability, copies on file, and effective date.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Tisha Manning, zoning manager for the community development. Before you is the comprehensive plan and future land use... I'm sorry. Before you is the future land use and zoning for the Nova Road rezoning. Again, it's 30.38 acres north of Nova Road, east of Bay Breeze Drive, and south of Shaker Palm. The existing flu is low-density residential, and the proposed future land use is medium-density residential. The existing zoning is R1 with a proposed zoning of R3 multi-family dwelling. The development is compatible with the surrounding area and poses no adverse impacts on city facilities. This is just a map of the zoning future land use for the area, and as stated, it's low-density residential. I do want to point out, too, the north of that property is Center Lake, which is mixed use, and across the street, it's low-density residential. But I do want to point out also that that is the future site for the school, the new school and the bus depot. Again, this is just the zoning for that area. The residential development regulations by zoning district, as you can see, are one single-family, requires 10,000 for a minimum site area with a lot width of 75. What the applicants are proposing or requesting is R3, which gives them the ability for single-family duplex or multifamily dwelling. The total net developer acres is 25, which gives them a max density of 10 units at medium-density residential that equates to about 250 dwelling units. Right now, for the existing low-density residential, which is four dwelling units, a max of four dwelling units per acre, it is 100 dwelling units. So the potential number of lots by zoning, if it stays with the existing R1, it will be 87, and the proposed R3 zoning gives them the ability for 187. And both of those is considering open space requirements of about 20 to 25 percent. Staff, DRC, does recommend approval of both the future land use as well as the zoning. Planning commission also recommended approval, and likewise, we ask that city council also recommend approval of ordinance 2023-56 for the future land use and ordinance 2023-57 for the zoning. Staff is available if you have any questions, as well as the applicant is here to answer any questions you may have.
Would the applicant like to speak to these items? Then we'll get comments from public. John Melvin, is that correct?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmembers. My name is John Melvin. I'm at 1669 Bay Breeze Drive, St. Cloud. The concerns that myself and the resident has is that Nova Road, right now, the traffic, okay? The... And in the future, that's just a two-lane. So is the city gonna be trying to do something to make it wider to accommodate all the new items that's going there, such as the school, the bus depot, and this new housing plan? And then we got safety concerns because right now, our kids are being picked up on the bus on Nova Road. And what other we have is the property value of the homes that's already there, okay? He's talking about bringing in 187, and it's not just all single-family homes, it's gonna be like multi, like condos, duplexes, something like that. So that's a concern. That's another concern that the residents have there also. Okay? And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So to Mr. Melvin's concerns, this R3 also allows apartments, and I think we have enough apartments in the city personally. I'm not comfortable with the R3 zoning. I don't know if Tisha can go over R2, what R2 would be. I just... I know you're not probably prepared for that question, but I know you're gonna handle it.
I got it. So R2 zoning allows single-family and duplex. The reason why city staff is approving or is requesting, did approve this, is because of the school district that's going with the new high school right across the street as well as the bus depot and the improvements for Nova Road that will be coming about.
Oh, yeah. Can you address that for Mr. Melvin? That that's a county road and that I don't know where it is on the county schedule for widening. I don't know if you happen to know that, but...
I do not, but the deputy director does.
Good evening, council. Dagmarie Segarra, deputy director. Yeah, right now, we are in talk, as you know, working on a master plan, transportation master plan in combination with the county. And in the... Nova Road is projected to be a frameworks street, which it will be four lanes. As far as the priority, I know that it is being... It's gonna be in the 2040 map, but in the details in regards when it's going to be built, unfortunately, I don't have that information.
Okay. So for me, when I look at the map, I feel like the current zoning is appropriate for the area. Just my personal opinion on that.
Would anyone else on the council like to speak to this item? Do we have any further discussion and/or motion for ordinance number 2023-56, the first item? We have no motion, so I assume there will be no approval?
Well, I think if the council is not interested in approving, we'd like either a motion to deny, the request, and move forward.
Do I have a motion for denial?
Motion to deny.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have motions for denial from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Fletcher. Gilbert, was that Gilbert? I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Do I have a motion for denial of ordinance number 2023-57?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny for denial. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And it so carries. Both items are denied. Brings us to item number four. Madam Clerk, please read that into the record.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2023-49, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending and reorganizing Chapter 10 Building and Building Regulations of Part II City Code and Part III Land Development Code in their entirety, providing for severability, conflict codification, Scrivener's ever publication and effective date.
Good evening, council. Dagmarie Segarra, deputy director for community development. So this is the second reading or final reading of the Land Development Code Reorganization that we brought to you back in November. No further changes were made to the proposed reorganization. Staff continues to recommend approval. I can go through the presentations if you wish me to, but nothing has changed, so we can skip to the good part. As I mentioned, you approved the first reading on November 9, 2023, and staff is recommending approval ordinance 2023-49. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dagmarie. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, then we'll have discussion and a motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher, a second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number five. Could you read that in the record, please?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2023-50, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Chapter 1 General Provisions Administration and Boards of Commissions of Part III Land Development Code, adding regulations stipulating the rules for construction, interpretation, measurements, and calculations, as well as providing for severability, conflict codification, Scrivener's errors, publication, and an effective date.
Dagmarie Segarra, deputy director, community development. Again, this is the comparing ordinance to the first one. This is only amending the first chapter of the new reorganization of the Land Development Code. No changes have been made since the first reading, and staff still recommends approval. I can go through the presentation if you wish me to, or I can skip to the good part. The first reading was approved in November 9, 2023, and staff recommends approval ordinance 2023-50.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. If you could read item six.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2023-52, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning the Platted Right Away located south of Wintercom Lane and Commsole Way, east of Tohoku Boulevard, and west of Cross Prairie Parkway, specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Again, Dagmarie Segarra, this is this final public hearing for a right-away abandonment on Tohoku Development. This is... This was brought to you back in November to vacate an existing right-away in the location where the future high school for the Tohoku Development is going to be built. It's not needed, therefore, they're requesting abandonment, and staff recommends approval. This is the sketch of the depiction of the area to be abandoned. It means all the land development regulations, and staffs recommend approval of ordinance 2023-54... I mean, 52, sorry. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Thank you.
Good evening, Celia Dorn, on behalf of the applicant, 17 South Orlando, Kissimmee. We agree with staff's recommendation, and we're happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, could we have discussion and/or motion by council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item number seven.
First reading and introduction of ordinance number 2023-43, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the potable water element of the comprehensive plan, providing for filing of the planning commission, recommendation, and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability, conflict, copies on file, and effective date.
Good evening, Dagmarie Segarra, again. This one I'm very excited about. This is one of several elements that we're going to be bringing up to you in the next following months. You heard from us with the Parks and Recreation Element, and this is the potable water element. We're updating the element to comply with our 10-year plan and the new requirements by the state. Staff recommends approval of this amendment. The purpose of this element is to provide potable service water to the joint planning area and also identify the plan for water supply services and facilities needed in the future. This update includes principles and guidelines and consistence that are with the Florida state regarding the potable water, and the goals and objectives and policies are to reflect the preservation of potable water. The city has entered an ILA with the Toho Water back in October and assumed the responsibilities of the management of the water for the city of St. Cloud and within the JPA. We completed a 10-year water supply in December 2022, and the primary objective was to identify and plan for the water supply sources and facilities needed in the future. Staff recommended approval. The planning commission also recommended approval in November 14, and it is a staff recommendation to recommend approval of ordinance 2023 for the transmitter to the state. This item should be going... Coming back to you in February. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to items eight, nine, and 10.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-53, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately 655.86 acres identified as Belatera, generally located south of Kissimmee Park Road, east of Lake Toho Piccolaga, and west of Florida's Turnpike, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. First reading and introduction of ordinance number 2023-54, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation, mixed use to approximately 655.86 acres identified as Belatera, generally located south of Kissimmee Park Road, east of Lake Toho Piccolaga, and west of Florida's Turnpike, providing for amending the future official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission, recommendation, and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability, copies on file, and effective date. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-55, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment and zoning... Of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 655.86 acres identified as Belatera from mixed-use zoning designation county to a mixed-use zoning designation city with a mixed-use future land use designation adopted by ordinance number 2023-54, generally located south of Kissimmee Park Road, east of Lake Toho Piccolaga, and west of Florida's Turnpike, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the planning commission, recommendation, and proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Good evening, Dagmarie Segarra. Before you are three ordinances. The first one is for an annexation of a property that is contiguous to the city and is next to each water in the mixed-use district. The second one is the future land use amendment to adopt the same mixed-use district that is currently has in the county. And the third one is the zoning of mixed-use that is all... zoning of mixed-use that is also in the county to be annexed with the same zoning designation. Staff recommends approval. The annexation meets the requirements of the state. The proposed future land use is mixed-use. The proposed zoning is also mixed-use. The development is compatible with the surrounding areas and consistent with existing entitlements of the property, and there is no adverse impacts to the city facility. We would also like to note that with this annexation request, the city will be adopting and approving the Ocelot County approvals, previously entitlements approved by the county, such as the concept plan, the preliminary subdivision plan, the Habitat Management Conservation Plan, and the community district, the CDD. This request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and the future land use element policies for mixed-use. The requested mixed-use zoning designation is also consistent with the mixed-use future land use, and the project already has development applications approved that gives entitlements. This is a depiction of the future land use map and the zoning map. As you can see, the property is contiguous to the city limits, and it has a mixed-use designation in the county. This is a depiction of the entire East Lake Toho element. As you can see, this is a projection of development for the future in that area. This is just one of the puzzles, pieces in the puzzle. And this is the area, this is the conceptual plan that was approved by the county, and the applicant is proposing to keep the same entitlements. A quick description of the project. The project includes rear-loaded products, different lot sizes, apartments, approximately 300 units, and a 20-acre school site. It also includes two neighborhood centers and a multipurpose street and pedestrian path. The staff recommended approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval on November 14, and it is staff recommendation for the City Council to approve ordinance 2023-53, 2023-54 for transmittal to TEO, and the ordinance number 2023-55 upon the effective date of the transmittal. That concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and I believe that the applicant is here to answer any questions as well.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item or items?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Tom Sullivan with the Gray Robinson Law Firm on behalf of the property owner. Just wanted to compliment staff on their presentation. Appreciate their recommendation. Look forward to being part of the city and happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to these items? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. Councilmember Fletcher?
I just want to make a couple of comments. If staff could go back a slide real quick, a couple of slides to where it shows the unit count, right there. So I just want to give a little more explanation for the community. Whether we approve this tonight, it's going to be built out in the county, no matter what. We're not approving for the development of these units. It would be built whether we approve this or deny it tonight. What it does allow us to do is to collect the impact fees. And with those impact fees, it allows us to build out Hopkins Park Community Center and things of that nature. So with that, I will make a motion for approval.
Before I, I'll hold your motion, Councilmember Urban.
Sorry about that.
Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I'll second his motion. I just would like to say that I was, that's exactly what I was going to say. This is going to be built whether we annex this in or not. And it's, you know, to me, I had the wonderful opportunity this morning to try and get on the Turnpike northbound, and it was quite an experience. The frustrating part to me is that rooftops are going up in this area before there are alternative routes to go over the Turnpike. We have to emphasize that we need Cross Prairie Parkway finished as soon as possible and alternative routes in this area. It's just very frustrating that you're seeing rooftops go up, and there's still one way in and one way out. That's very concerning to me. But with that being said, the reality of it is, this is going to be built whether we annex it or not. I would prefer to have those impact fees to build projects like Hopkins Park, because these people are going to drive on our roads and use our parks and our public services. So I do think it's important for that. So with that, I'll second Councilmember Fletcher's motion.
Okay, I'm assuming you are making a motion, Mr. Fletcher, and a second, Mr. Urban, for the adoption of ordinance number 2023-53, first of all. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
No.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion passes for one.
Do we have a motion or discussion, discussion or motion in regard to ordinance number 23-54?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion from Councilmember Urban? Do we have a second?
Mayor, I'm sorry. Did you ask for public input on that?
Oh, no. Yes, I did. I asked for public input on all of it.
Okay. All right. So I think a gentleman may have missed.
Is there someone who'd like to speak to item number two, then, that may have intentionally overlooked?
John Raines, 101 Lake Shore Boulevard, Saint Cloud, Florida. I didn't speak on the first one because I thought it was only 300 units. When you made the comment that it was total of almost 1,000, are they going to come back like they've done? Other people have come and asked for a higher density? Because the city allows a higher density per acre than the county does. That's been changed?
Finish it. Ask your question.
No, I'm just, I'm asking for clarification.
Ask your questions, and we'll address them.
Are they able to come back and ask for a higher density after this has been approved?
Do you have any other questions?
No.
Dagmarie, would you like to speak to that? Thank you, Ms. Raines.
Yeah. The mixed-use district has a maximum density of 25 dwelling units per acre. As was demonstrated in the previous slide right here, all of this has been already projected and approved by the county. We're just annexing in so we can collect the revenues. Now, to answer the gentleman's question, they cannot exceed the entitlements that they have approved as of today or the 25 dwelling units per acre. In the event that they wish to do so, they will have to amend their concept plan and the preliminary subdivision plan, and it will be open for a public hearing and public comment as well.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your question. Thank you for the answer. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? The city manager?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that there is no category higher than the current mixed-use designation that they are requesting that they already have in the county. So I think that also helps answer his question.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment if you don't mind.
Yes. Mr. Councilmember Fletcher?
To address your concern, so if we didn't accept what was just approved, they could go to the county and ask for anything that they wanted. By us annexing it in, it has to come before this board now, so Saint Cloud has control over what happens on that property, theoretically. So I just want to make that clarification.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Urban. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny?
No.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries for one.
Brings us to the next ordinance, ordinance number 2023-55. Is there anyone who wanted to speak to that that didn't do so earlier? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Councilmember Fletcher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries for one.
Brings us to item number 11. Madam Clerk, please read that into the record.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-58, an ordinance of the City of Saint Cloud, amending the City of Saint Cloud general employees' retirement system planned by amending Section 1 definitions to include council members as general employees and eligible participants. Amending Section 3, Board of Trustees, to provide that current council members shall not be eligible to serve on the board, providing for codification, providing for severability and provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for administrative correction of Scrivener's errors, and providing for publication and an effective date.
Good evening. Justin Kleisner, Human Resources Director. This ordinance would expand the definition of eligible participants on our general pension plan to include city council members. This would be the first hearing. If passed tonight, we would then take it back for actuarial impact studies and legal review from our pension attorney, and it would be brought back at a later date.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Gilbert?
Yeah, Justin, just one question. The council that's here now is not eligible for that through their term, correct?
No, they would be eligible if you meet the criteria, yes.
During this term, or?
No, as of the effective date of the ordinance, yes.
Okay. I just needed that.
And just so for clarity, because it is a question that comes up, there is an exemption in the conflict voting rules related to retirement plan for elected officials that allows sitting council members to participate in a vote, even though they might be eligible for retirement.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to clarify, this is going to have the city council following the same rules as employees. We have to work a minimum of five years. Your term is only four. So there's your additional clarification.
So that means you have to run again at the end of this term to qualify.
One step at a time.
Do we have any other discussion from council?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. If you could read item number 12 into the record. Thank you.
Public hearing for resolution number 2023-234R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, in support of the 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPER, required by the U.S. Housing and Urban Development HUD under the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and authorizing the mayor to approve the report.
Good evening. Antoinette Forbes, Economic Development Director. This evening, I intend to bring to you the CAPER, which is the end-of-year report for our CDBG funding. So this is part of our consolidated plan process, which is our five-year plan, which outlines the activities and programs that we intend to do with our funding. As part of that, we have to present our CAPER, which is the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. And part of that report means that it has to be submitted publicly. There's also a public process that allows the public to provide any comments, and we have advertised as such. This report covers activities from October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2022. During that time, we had three primary activities, both in public service and youth programs and in economic development. In public service, we partnered with the Council on Aging, which helped us do their food pantry. And for the youth program, we partnered with Career Source for their summer youth internship program, where they provided temporary jobs and financial literacy to 20 Saint Cloud students. And then under economic development, we finalized our COVID small business grant program. It also should be noted that we started the, we funded four seniors in the adult daycare program, and then under the food pantry, we helped fund or service 1,660 units. So part of the citizen participation process that I discussed includes tonight's hearing, and the public comment has actually closed. We have not received any comments. It has been publicized as well and available on our website. Upon approval, it will be submitted to HUD within 15 days, which is part of the process. Staff is recommending approval of resolution 2023-234R, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Antoinette, I didn't know you were responsible for the CDBG stuff, too. I know it's a lot of reporting. I get CDBG money at my other job, and it's so much reporting, and it's worthwhile programming, but it's a lot of work. But thank you very much for your update.
Other duties as assigned.
She asked for CDBG.
Glutton.
That is certainly the sentiment of all the council. Thank you for all the incredible work that you do. Do we have a motion for the approval of resolution number 2023-234R?
So moved.
We have a motion, Councilmember Matheny, a second by the mayor. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is council action items. I will read these. The first item is the discussion and possible action regarding the use of pedicabs in the downtown area.
Good evening again. Antoinette Forbes, Economic Development Director. So this evening, we brought before you the idea of pedicabs. We wanted to present staff, some research that staff has done. It was brought by council that you wanted us to research both the idea of having pedicabs in downtown, as well as the costs and challenges. So what you see before you this evening is the idea, the concept of it. And then we request from you feedback and how you like direction from staff to proceed. So under the scope, we're looking at it being privately operated, would not be a city, neither city-funded or city-operated activity. A permit would be required, very similar to the way we do golf carts, non-transferable to a separate entity. Registration will be required through the city. The vehicles must be non-motorized, as well as labeled and decalced with the fairs, and the drivers need to have identifiable uniforms. The proposed boundary we're looking at to the north is the lakefront. On the east is Brown Chapel. To the west is Mississippi and 13th to the south. The scope of operations, we're looking at it mirroring the same hours as the entertainment district, which is Wednesday through Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. We do not recommend designated drop-off or pickup areas to prevent congestion. We also suggested one approved vendor in use at a time, and that if it were to be used during specific city events, it needs to be coordinated with the city in advance. I've already stated about the decal and rates need to be openly displayed. And as I mentioned, this was brought on by council, asking us to do the appropriate research. And so staff had looked at comparable municipal cities, including Stanford, Orlando, Mount Dora, and Orange County. This is the proposed boundary that was referenced. And we are asking for feedback on an ordinance from council, and I'm available for any questions.
Well, thank you. First of all, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we will. We will not go to council yet. Please state your name and address.
Jay Brown, 818 Pennsylvania Avenue. First, I would like to say I would like to thank everybody for working really hard on this ordinance. I was the one that came up with the idea of doing the pedicab, so just wanted to show my face tonight. And if anyone had any questions, feel free to ask me. I may not have all the answers. I think this is going to be a learning process for all of us. So just let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, we hang on there.
All right.
Does anyone else in the audience want to speak to this item? If not, we will now entertain discussion by our council. Councilmember Gilbert?
Yeah. Thanks for doing this. I've seen other cities that have used pedicabs to the success of transporting people at a great fair, and it helps with parking alleviation if we get a large event like we did with the Christmas parade, and we do certain items such as that. This is going to be the same zones as the golf carts. Is that where our duplicate is? Okay, that's what I thought. Just a little clarification on that. And then, secondly, it would be good. I know it's Wednesday through Sunday, but I would like to see some verbiage in there with council, if we can put it also available for special events. I don't know if there's a separate approval needed, but that's something that's going to help alleviate the parking, where they can park at Lake Shore and go downtown or vice versa. I would just like to see some language in there for special events, if I may, and I yield back.
Mr. Menzeris?
I just wanted to remind the council. So the item before you is really just to have a general...
a general discussion on this. So if you have any ideas that you want to incorporate into a final ordinance, it will require an ordinance, which will come back for you, like traditionally, the way ordinances are, first reading and then final adoption. So if you have thoughts like Mr. Gilbert, just about things like special events, that's fine, hours for operation days, anything that you might think might be appropriate, now will be a time to let us know.
Thank you, Mr. Menzares. Councilmember Matheny?
Thanks. Sorry. I spent a lot of time thinking about it, and I spoke to the police chief, which I know he had another item, and he was going to try to make it here in time, but.
He's on his way.
Well, I talked to him about it, you know, kind of kicking around ideas. So here's the thoughts I had. So I think, like, what if I live on this route, right? And then this route runs till 2:00 a.m. Believe me, I've taken a pedicab before. I wasn't real quiet on it. I'm just thinking, if you live on that street, and initially when we were talking about it, in my mind, I was thinking it was going to go up and down Florida. That's what I was thinking, right? So if they, now, it's covered the whole golf court, golf cart coverage, but I was like, you know, there's nothing down there really to drive people unless you're just getting picked up at your house, right? So I was just thinking, if you're on this path, and it's going until 2:00 in the morning, every night, you're not going to be real thrilled about that, the noise. And so we talked about putting some regulation in about noise, like it can't have music blaring on the pedicab, it can't, you don't have bells, and, you know, just trying to be cognizant of the people that you're going to be going by until 2:00 in the morning. So that was one of my concerns. And then the other thing I was thinking about was, the county has a concessionaire that does airboats. And so one of the things they have on there is they have to have a GPS unit on their airboat. That way, if there's bad actors, right, so someone calls and goes, this person was doing these things, or breaking whatever regulations, it's very easy for the city to go, okay, it's 357 is doing that, like as a way to kind of like track it. I know the police chief was like, it'll be, it'll have stickers, it'll have indicators of like, you know, what the pedicab number, but just trying to think of ways to make sure, to try and help make sure that it's not annoying to the people that live along the path. I think it's great if we keep people from driving when they've had a few cocktails, and, you know, I think all those are great things, but just trying to think of ways to make sure it's not a nuisance to people that live along the route. And the other thing, you know, when I was discussing with the police chief, we were kind of talking about it, and I'm not really sure how much use people will have for it right now, but I think it's nice if we could get ahead of something for once. We're not, we're not like rushing at the back, because that seems to be our, you know, we're all, we're just busy, and we always seem to be kind of on the backward side. But those were my thoughts, if we could put something in there about noise, and then maybe there's something in there, like if people are breaking the rules so many times, then they can't, they can't be a vendor anymore, you know, whatever. Those were just kind of thoughts I had.
Councilmember Urban. Mr. Menzares, you have something else?
Well, I was just going to point out that the proposed ordinance that we drafted, which I believe was in your packet, it's, we talk about a vendor, but actually, the way the ordinance that we're recommending you adopt is couched. It's not necessarily a vendor, it's the actual, the actual operator of the pedicab is the one that has the, basically the license to operate it. And that individual has to be fingerprinted and background-checked and meet those requirements. So to get to Councilwoman Matheny's point, if they are quote-unquote "a bad actor," then it's easy to revoke that one particular license, and we're not relying on some vendor to have to govern their own employees. So the city would come in and say, no, we, the operator of this pedicab either, you know, dealt with it and didn't do something appropriate. So that one can, that one certificate is now removed, he can't, he or she can't operate anymore.
Yeah, I'm cool with that. It just, on the update, it said one vendor at a time on the screen, so that made me feel like we were getting a.
Well, the way, and I saw that on the, I saw that too on the thing, but that's a little different than how the proposed ordinances, which that our office drafted, which was provided to you, which follows the, which follows the model that other places have used. It goes, goes to the operator of the pedicab to be able to address it. So obviously, we could change that, but that's currently how we're recommending, because we think that's what gives you the most accountability, the direct accountability to the individuals that are doing this.
Okay.
Councilmember Urban?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for, staff for working so hard on this and bringing this back. I think it's a very exciting possibility for our city and our downtown area. I agree with the noise. I also talked to the police chief, and that was one of his concerns when he dealt with it in Orlando. So I would like to have something with noise or music in there, so they're not disturbing neighbors. The, one of the questions I had was on, it says non-motorized. Does that include, if it was, like, some of them have, like, electric, that kind of helped it push along a little bit?
Power-assisted bikes, they're excluded from the proposed ordinance.
Okay, okay. And I would like to see more than just one vendor as well. I'd like to open it up to more than that. Yeah, those were the only comments I had. I'm excited to move this forward.
I was just wanting clarification. What do you mean by one vendor? One, just one person's in charge of the whole pedicab system? No competition? Is that what we mean?
Let the author of the slide speak.
So what staff is proposing is that there's one owner-operator per event or per evening at a time, so that there's not, there's not conflict. That is what we're proposing.
So I would say that's going to be difficult to manage for staff, so.
We are open to changing it.
Councilmember Fletcher?
I just want to say thank you for coming. I know it's, you know, getting up here is a little nerve-wracking. I know it's been a year that we've been working through this process. We had the opportunity to have lunch today, and we kind of went over the whole process and all the things that staff have been doing.
Where'd you eat?
Fat boys.
Good barbecue right there. And I got to explain to him the amount of work that staff had put into it by contacting all the other regulatory agencies, and that staff had actually given us a proposed ordinance and a lot of legwork has, you know, went ahead and been done upfront in anticipation of this conversation. So thank you to staff for doing that and the communication regarding that. I think all of the comments that council has mentioned, I'm in fully support of them with the GPS, the noise, and the things that were mentioned. So those are my comments. But good job, staff, for bringing this up, bringing this together.
Chief Kirk, do you have anything else to add?
Welcome.
Why didn't you turn your lights and sirens on to get here?
Good evening, council. Doug Erkey, Police Chief. No, I had the opportunity to speak to several council members. Coming from Orlando, we did have them up there as well. I already relayed some of the concerns that I did have, especially if we wind up making them electric, just maybe managing the speed to make sure they don't go too quickly, make sure that the liability is effective for whatever is going to be out there, a way to track them, as well as what you said, council member. So law enforcement will be there, and we will actually support it, whatever the council deems, and we'll make sure that this is operated in a safe and efficient manner.
Thank you.
Can I ask the chief?
Councilmember Gilbert?
Chief, can I ask you a question? You've gone through this experience, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to weigh on the safety benefits versus the non, because I truly think if someone's going to be driving home and getting in one of these things after Councilmember Matheny says a couple, maybe too many, I think it's better than having them get in their car. I don't know. What do you see in Orlando? What had you seen in Orlando? I'm sorry, sir.
So in Orlando, it was, it gets somewhat chaotic in the downtown area. I will say that my thought is, basically during large events that we do have, it might be beneficial to us to have them riding around a little bit. So instead of having vehicle traffic, that could actually help us. Overloading these could be a potential issue as well, and obviously, that would be something that we would actually have to monitor, that if we do see someone or anyone that's going to be operating these, there is an actual capacity of how many bodies or adults should be in this. So we'll be able to regulate that as well. We'll keep track of that. The music is another issue as well. That was something else that we saw quite a bit in Orlando, is the speakers on these things were very, very loud. Coming up and down the state streets is one thing that I was concerned about, but obviously, it seems like we can actually put that in the ordinance to control the sound, and then that can be regulated as well.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion from council? Any other suggestions? Do you have enough to work on?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We may be having some pedicabs. Brings us to item number two. Madam Clerk, will you read item two for me?
Discussion and possible action regarding council serving on committee and boards other than, or of other entities.
Are you going to address that? We have a.
If you would like me to.
You can. Go right ahead.
You all have in front of you the present committees that you sit on. If you can please check to see if there's any changes that you would like to make going forward, or if anybody would like to move around.
I'm happy with mine.
I'm happy with mine.
Christmas for the kids of Osceola is not functioning anymore at this point. There's been some discussions, the thing, someone else might take it over, but it doesn't look like it will be the way. I'll keep you updated on that. I am no longer serving on the Florida League of Mayors, because I'm serving on the Florida League of Cities Board of Directors. And I couldn't serve on the board of mayors and the cities, Florida League of Cities too, to keep my sanity. So I have stepped down from Florida League of Mayors, but I am serving on the board of Florida League of Cities, which is not on your list. Any other changes? Anyone? Everyone else happy? Can we move on? It looks like everybody's happy where they're at. Brings us to item number three. Madam Clerk, please read that.
Discussion and possible action regarding the selection of deputy mayor.
Councilmember Urban. Deputy Mayor Urban?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Deputy Mayor Matheny. I just thought it sounded a lot better anyways, and she's deserving of it, so I would like to make that motion.
I'd like to second that.
We have a second from who? Mr. Gilbert. Do we have any other nominations? Just for the record, everybody say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it is so approved. That doesn't have to be voted on. Work.
That's fine.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you, Colby. It's easier to say than councilwoman.
Mr. Menzares?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to give the city council an update. They sent an email earlier today that Ole will be making the Tallahassee trip January 24th and 25th, but the 25th is a city council meeting. So last time, when it was going to be on a, when the return was going to be on a city council day, the city council chose to cancel that meeting, because it's a very long day for the city council. Wake up early, go run through the Capitol, and then potentially have a late night here in the council chambers. So looking to see if the city council wanted staff to look at canceling the second meeting, second city council meeting in January.
I would certainly be in favor of council in that meeting, for going to go as a group up to legislative sessions at Tallahassee.
Thank you. Sorry, I anticipated we were going to go on a Monday and Tuesday, so I was surprised when the email came out today that it was on a Wednesday and Thursday. Also, wanted to point out the last-minute Christmas tree that we had Kelly Braybent and Kelly LaCoe, two Kellies, helped us put that together, and I thought it was a really nice addition. I don't remember a Christmas tree in the council chambers previously. I think it looks amazing. Yeah. And also, previously, the city council had, we had been talking about moving the council chambers downstairs, when some of the departments that were down there were going to be vacating in the future. We did have our consultant review that's working on our space needs analysis, and he pointed out some potential flaws with that, because there's some support pillars that are going to block the view. So I think that plan is now scrapped permanently, and maybe when there's a future addition, that we could go forward with that. And so in the meantime, I'm going to have the city staff start working on the renovations to this room that we've talked about for a long time, the TVs. Councilwoman Matheny reminded me earlier today, I guess there had been a request for some touchscreen. I don't know if there was any other items that the board had been asking for previously that I might not be aware of. If so, let me know. And just Merry Christmas to you, your families, and to all of our staff and the residents that are here.
Councilmember Matheny?
I don't actually have anything, except to say, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, everybody. This, I guess this will be our last time to see each other in December, but thank you all.
Councilmember Urban?
Just a couple of items. So earlier in the meeting, we discussed the Belatera annexation, and I have some concerns in that entire area about how quickly things are moving, how fast the city's growing. I'd like to see if the council would maybe be interested in opening up some discussions with the county about maybe how the services are going to be provided in that area. Just really concerned about transportation and public safety and everything going on in that area, and just wanted to see what the council thought about it.
Councilmember Fletcher?
I agree with you. I actually live in that area. I know that there was some discussion of a joint workshop. Dave, did you have an update on that? Is there, is that still going to happen?
No, I think one of the things that you and I had mentioned was that in the past, we had done, prior to your time on the council, we had done a joint workshop with the county for the Pine Grove Road area, because there were multiple projects that were happening at the same time. Some were in the city, some were in the county, so we were able to talk about.
I thought it was, I thought there was another, something we were talking about months ago, and then it was canceled, but it would be coming back to us? Was it the transportation update? Sorry, Dave.
That's okay. I was getting ready to open the door for everybody to get out of here. So we've got a couple of things coming to you. We've got the Alligator Chain of Lakes mixed-use district. Remember, we had asked for the county to consider doing some employment districts and some extra things over there. They've hired a consultant. We should be ready to do that in either January or February. So that's something we'll be working on together. We are working on an interlocal agreement for transportation. So we promised that we would come back probably in the first couple of months of the next year with the, we can make it part of either January or February's workshop, to talk about transportation improvements and working with the county on making sure all that stuff's accomplished.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So you guys, most of you know that I've always said, like, we need to challenge the limits of the JPA. I'm not sure the JPA limits are in the right place. And I know city staff has done modeling and reports and things, and it'll say, we need to keep annexing, because then you get the dirt, and you get the money, and we're going to have to provide services anyways, is what they always say. But I don't really buy into all the modeling, and the feeling I have is, like, eventually, there's going to be an end to the city, and you're going to have to serve what's on the other side of it. So it's kind of a fallacy to me to be like, well, we have to get it, because we would have to serve it, and we would be impacted anyways, because there's always something on the other side of it. So it's a challenge. And I know we've gone through the exercise of having the people do the modeling, and, you know, come back and say all these things. You know, I think it would be nice to have a concentrated plan. I know one of the challenges is, like, planning fire station locations, right? Like, if Osceola County expects that we're going to annex all the way to our JPA, well, then they're not going to put anything near the edge, because they're going to think the city will serve it, and then, you know, it becomes a challenge with that. But there definitely is, like, a problem for me to just have the argument, well, we have to keep annexing, because we need more money, because we're going to make, you know, it just seems like a big machine, that we're just going to get a bigger, bigger machine, and we can't afford it. So I understand where Mr. Urban's coming from.
Well, my argument hasn't been that we're going to, we need to annex to have more money. The issue for me has always been, so we have a say-so in the development. And that's the amazing thing about the JPA, is that the county has to talk to us. I have no problem talking with the county. I believe that the city staff should always be talking with the county, working on this thing. I know if there's a workshop that gets set up, I'm not opposed to that. But, you know, the whole JPA thing is a gift the county's given us, to be able to have say-so in what they could develop with us having no input, with no restrictions on how the development goes.
Yeah.
But we have a voice.
Actually, in the last ten, in the last 10 years, the JPA.
That's why we spent $100,000 on this report.
Yeah, the JPA has given you incredible tools to control growth and to provide Yeah, the JPA has given you incredible tools to control growth and to provide for efficiency.
You know, we don't have to annex, we don't have to annex anything. We can say no to anything that we don't like and say, hey, county, you can have it. But if they're going to drive on our roads, use our parks, impact us, then we certainly ought to have a significant say-so.
Yeah. And in the last 10 years, you've worked with the county on specific plans for parks already.
The county's been, county's-
Yeah, you spent the last-
They've worked with us a lot.
You spent the last year and a half working on some very detailed roadway plans. We're going to start talking about public safety in the coming year. So there's a lot of things that the JPA does for you all to help you plan services so that we're efficient. And, you know, there's not a lot of counties in the state even that do it as well.
I have no problem with there's some way that we could meet with the county and have a joint workshop and say, how can we work together better, what are, how can we come up with a better strategic plan? I have no problem with that discussion. So what are we looking for? Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. I agree with you that the county has worked with us really good, especially since the mayor and I have been on council, like from the day we started to today, I think the relationship is 100 times better than the day you and I got on council. I'm not opposed to having a workshop again with the county. I mean, I think it's great. I mean, we've had what, like two in the time we've been here? So seven years we've had two. The only thing I would say is if we have a workshop, we need to have our stuff buttoned up because the last workshop, it was like kind of embarrassing because the county is like, well, we did everything you asked us to do, but you haven't done your part of it, you know, so let's make sure we've got our stuff done.
I think you'll find that very different now.
Okay.
Staff's really come through on our end and a lot of the things you're doing now with the JPA, the transportation stuff, you guys are, we are updating our entire transportation master plan. We're working with the county on a joint mobility fee fund study and with this interlocal agreement, we're going to be talking about formats for tri-party agreements to make sure no matter where they develop in the city or the county, that they pay their share of the roads that they're impacting.
Yeah, we definitely, I mean, it's definitely miles ahead of where, when the mayor and I got on council for sure, so.
You guys have done great work.
Yeah, if we could just set something up sooner rather than later, I would just like to get aggressive on this and get ahead of things. The annexation that we had this evening, the ship has already sailed on that, so to speak, but I would like to get ahead of this so that we can define what we want and how we want to grow and work with the county very closely on that. So that's all I have on that.
Can I get clarification before you move on to the next topic? Because I think what Councilwoman Matheny started talking about was an intergovernmental meeting. And I've been trying to understand Councilwoman Fletcher's original request versus some of the things that then were later said.
I'm not opposed to either.
So I don't, I don't feel like there were three of the same type of meetings that were just being discussed. So I'm looking for a little more direction. I think what Mr. Tomek was talking about was, would have been more, you know, where we could have the staffs talking about those types of things. I think Ms. Matheny's right, we had several meeting, intergovernmental meetings in the past where we kind of had some complaints that we wanted to discuss and I agree, I didn't like how it went. And if we're going to do that, I would prefer that we start with the staff meetings, have a better understanding of all of our stuff and then, you know, several months out, if we feel that we still need to do an intergovernmental workshop at that point, then I think we can really show, like we've talked this stuff through and what we need to change.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that. Yeah.
Well, you know, I think Councilmember Matheny has hit on a very significant point. It's just like, we spent $100,000 on this study and we haven't met as a group to do what they told us to in this study, to talk about what we're going to do with it, what are the areas that we're going to focus on. Until we do that, what are we going to say to the county? I mean, we need to go to the county and not, and say, this is, these are our ideas, this is what we think we ought to be. What are your thoughts, you know? Is there any of this annexation that you think's a problem?
So one of the-
You guys have got to do some homework first. I think we need to have a workshop first.
So that actually makes me think we need to, because, so the metro forecasting growth model recommendation was that we annex within certain different phases, right? And it recommended phase one being the Edgewater-Belatera area. And so staff has worked on a deeper dive into phase one. We attached it to the Belatera annexation this evening, but we didn't have the opportunity to sit and go over it with staff. We haven't done a workshop to present to you the findings of that study. So it sounds like that should be the first thing that, because we have completed phase one. So we can talk about that with the city council and then, you know, determine what the next step is. I will tell you, we are already planning a workshop in January to talk about funding of some of the capital projects that the city council has coming, fire station, police stations and the purchase of some pieces of property. So we were going to be talking to you about the potential of debt, what you want prioritized. Our finance department has, you know, been evaluating that. So I think, I don't know that we'll be able to do January, but we could look at February to do the Belatera and then continue on from there.
Well, certainly if you-
Not the Belatera, I'm sorry, the phase one deeper dive.
And certainly if you can talk to the, talk to the county with the staff and say, is there a better process that we can work through on this JPA and annexation and future developments that are on the board to bring us back a report, tell us where we need to go and if we need to meet together in the intergovernment meeting.
Okay, so-
That one, I don't think we're ready for yet.
Okay, and I see Mr. Fletcher is doing the thumbs up to that. Okay, so first, we're going to have our workshop. We'll talk, I'll talk to city staff and then we'll determine if we're ready for a county one. Okay? Thank you.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, let's use the tool that has been provided by us, that we paid for and get our ducks in a row as the new deputy mayor had alluded to. And then we go to the county with all of our ducks in a row because that's a heavy study and we paid people, so let's at least go and work on that first and go work on the rest. And besides that, just Merry Christmas, be safe and keep Christ in Christmas.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
This is the last meeting of the year, so I just wanted to, it's awesome serving with you guys and I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas to each and every one of you and your families. And thank you, staff, for all the hard work you've done this year. It's been, it's been fun for sure. And thank you to any of the residents in the audience and Merry Christmas to you guys as well.
And I too would like to just wish all of you a blessed, wonderful, family-filled, joy-filled, healthy Christmas. Brings us to our information section, report section. Monday, December 25th, city offices will be closed in observance of Christmas Eve holiday. Tuesday, December 26th, city offices will continue to be closed in observance of Christmas Day holiday. Monday, January 1st, city offices will be closed in observance of New Year's holiday. And January the 11th, there will be a city council meeting at 6:30 p.m. here in council chambers. Available for your review is warrant list number two. God bless you. And with that, there are no items on our agenda. We'll be adjourned.